Motion to approve agenda with addition of new business, second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the agenda with the addition. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Invocation, Christ King, Mr. Church. Good evening.
Good to see you guys. Pastor Steve, good to see you all again. I was thinking about a good passage to read over Thanksgiving, right? Since that's next week, so here's what I've got. It's from Philippians. "I thank my God every time I remember you in all my prayers for, for all of you. I always pray with joy because of your partnership in the gospel from the first day until now, being confident of this, that he who began a good work in you will carry on to completion until the day of Christ Jesus." Paul starts almost every one of his letters with Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving for those that he is in partnership and sharing the gospel. So, and I think as we get close to Thanksgiving, I'm, I'm just curious, what are you thankful for? Can I, I've never done that. Can I ask a question and have you answer me as part of my invocation? Can I ask that?
Sure.
What, what are you guys thankful for as we approach Thanksgiving?
I'm thankful for my family.
Absolutely.
I gotta go with that. It's my first choice too.
I am gonna punt and say I'm thankful for my family as well.
Family and our great community.
You can answer too, you guys. You're up here, so go for it.
I'll say family. That's what my dad says every year at Thanksgiving. And we say it's gotta be more than that.
It's a tradition.
No doubt, family.
Yep, yep. Well, I was thinking, you think you stole my answer there, Mayor. I was thinking about, uh, thankful for family, of course, but also I think it was you that said a great community. I know you all feel that way. Grateful for a great community and for great leaders like yourselves and for the work that you do. I know just being in leadership, you get, I'm sure you get the same kinds of emails I get, which are ninety-nine of them are positive, and then you get that one that sets you off for the day. But, uh, we're all thankful for you, for what you do and for, for the work that you put in to make our community great. Uh, so I thought let's begin our, our time with a word of prayer. We're glad, thank you for family. And, uh, as we move close to Thanksgiving, thank you for all the things that we have in our lives that we, we, we give thanks for, even those challenges that can, uh, uh, get to us sometimes. Uh, but they make us the people we are. So, thank you for that. I learned from the meeting that takes place today, thank you for, uh, good leaders and, uh, who put, uh, their constituents at the forefront of their thoughts and work tirelessly to make this a great community, the great community that it is. And so bless them and their time and, and, uh, bless all the items on the agenda and, uh, uh, just thanks again for your love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. God bless you guys. Happy Thanksgiving.
Next, a pledge of allegiance.
Hi, pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, united state, with liberty as its throne.
Mention of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? Uh, ready, moving on. Uh, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
This is a first, so.
You're referring now, Mayor.
Two four Sierra, one seven five Arch Street, Southeast Hutchinson. The mayor informs me that city council gets no special concessions, even though they know people, so. And the docs at work said that too. But I come before the council tonight to make a request to see if it would be possible to get the loose line trail plowed for the winter months within the city limits. Lots of people use the trail for walking, biking. And I just think it'd be a nice asset. They used to plow it. Doesn't have to be fancy, just, you know, Chris could go through with the plow truck once, so. And Gary wouldn't have to listen to me all weekend. Now, there is snowmobile trail, I understand that also, but there is an auxiliary trail next to the loose line trail that the snowmobiles do use also.
Angie, you're looking at the entire loose line in town or certain portions of it?
Even certain portions of it. If you went from Michigan, even if you went west from there, even to Main Street would be nice. It's just dangerous, especially on second half. A lot of sidewalks aren't plowed. So then I'm walking on the street and other people are on the streets also. The fat bikes, I see them on the trail a lot, but.
So, just for clarification, Matt, like how much of the loose line is used as a snowmobile trail within city limits?
I was gonna have Lynn come up and I was looking at her to maybe address some of that.
It sounds so lawful they are. I'm saying pretty much everywhere.
Yeah, I, I guess just to clarify for.
Yeah, just. So the loose line through town, the DNR does maintain it. We can maintain it within city limits, but there are sections that are designated specifically for, like you said, that purpose for, um, snowmobile. I know the area over by the old Bass Pond, um, there's a section that they, they do, um, cut out and it, there's a separate snowmobile section and then there's the loose line trail. So we can definitely have a conversation with our DNR representative that kinda has our area and see where we could look at plowing those sections of the loose line.
Yeah, I know I'm the only one that utilizes it, so.
Just to clarify, which the spot she's talking about is from the Bluff Street Bridge? Back around to Arch Street.
Like Lynn said, the Bass Pond is there.
So they do have a designated section that's separate from the loose line in that specific section you're speaking of? So it would be a conversation that we would just have to have again with the DNR, um, because it is the state trail. And then also, um, if it would get added to our list of trails. And we have a priority, obviously a list of things that we plow within our Parks Department also, but Public Works as well too. Um, so certain things after a, a large or a small snow event, um, there's a status of which things happen. So it would just be one of those things that we could add to the list, but it would be down pretty far. In our Parks Department, um, we maintain all the trails, the safe routes to school. All those are the ones we're out doing first, and then we get to the trails as the days go on. So definitely something we can look into. It would just depend on what the DNR says and then what sections are the most requested and what they're looking at.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do the snowmobile trail or snowmobile clubs, um, groom it through town?
So that would be the other, um, connection we would need to make would be with the snowmobile club to see what, you know, they utilize of the loose line, just what the agreement is with the snow, the snow pearls.
Snow pearls. I haven't seen it done, groomed through town, to be honest.
Yeah.
They, they, they do groom.
If you go farther east.
From Arch Street to Bluff Street, but that goes on your old railroad bed, which would be behind.
That's off the trail. That's separate, yeah.
Do they, do they stop grooming there or do they go west also?
Uh, once they crop, they come back and connect with the loose line to go under the, um, the bridge. And then there's another section where they kinda offshoot. It's, it's kind of like, it goes off and on in certain sections throughout.
And they do go east, it looks like. They do go east, it looks like.
Correct, yeah.
But like they don't groom the section of trail that goes like on the land bridge behind the sanctuary? Like they don't groom that? Or don't, don't they go on the north corridor, north of the sanctuary, the trail?
I haven't seen it groomed, but, and we walk it a lot.
Yeah.
So they do, they go across from, they cross Bluff Street and go right behind.
Where the shark was. You know, like they take the north.
Yep.
And they go by the campground where the campers are and then west.
And they cut back in, yeah.
Underneath the tunnels.
Yeah.
So we can, yeah, we can, um, do some looking and asking and figure out what the best method to make sure, um, accommodate, accommodate all of our users, for sure.
Thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Matt said we're not supposed to have much snow this year, Angie.
Well, I hope that's true. Here he won't have to listen to me then.
Oh, you can keep talking to him, that's fine.
Moving on, uh, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and the council workshop of October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve them, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. E is approval of resolution number one, five, six, five, one, resolution to sell at auction surplus property. That's the planning, zoning, building vehicles. Uh, B is approval of resolution number one, five, six, five, two, resolution to sell at auctions, auction surplus property, public works, vehicles and equipment. C is approval of resolution number one, five, six, five, three, resolution adopting revised Smith's assessment rule, letting number two, project number twenty-two dash oh two, project number twenty-three dash oh two, and project number twenty-two dash oh three. Uh, D is, uh, approval of resolution number one, five, six, five, six, resolution to sell surplus property. That's IT equipment. Uh, E is approval of resolution number one, five, six, five, seven, resolution establishing regulations related to counting of write-in votes. F is approval of resolution number one, five, six, five, eight, resolution adopting a coma township memorandum for understanding for Coghlan Road Maintenance. G is, uh, approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the three M Club from March first through April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. H is, uh, approval of purchasing a plow truck. I has approval of purchasing a two thousand twenty-four Toro four thousand D ground master mower. Uh, J is, uh, claims appropriation and contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
No.
Entertainer motion?
Make a motion to approve it, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the consent agenda one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda two, claims appropriation, contract payment, register B. My son has a check on there for some, uh, stuff for the police department, I believe.
Make a motion to approve that, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim, with me abstaining the vote. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. They'll skip down to communications requests and petitions, stormwater resilience plan, north outreach engagement. Mr. Paulson.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before you tonight is just an update, um, for you and also for the community, uh, regarding our stormwater resilience plan. The city received some grant funds from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency earlier this year, uh, to work on establishing a resilience plan associated with our stormwater system, primarily focusing on flood control and managing areas in our community, uh, that flood periodically due to high intensity rain events or larger rain events. Um, with this tonight, what I wanna do is kinda give you an overview of what that looks like. Um, a big component of this, uh, is a tool that's been developed to collect information from the community. Uh, it's not uncommon during flood events where we get pictures and videos and things that people will send to us, uh, regarding flooded areas in our backyard or flooded areas in the street. This tool is essentially that same thing, just looking at things on an aggregate level. So, um, the study area that we're looking to do for this project is the north half of the community, north of, north of the South Fork Crow River. So, um, that area encompasses a lot of different neighborhoods, a lot of different drainage dynamics. And essentially what it does is it's gonna provide the community an opportunity to click on a location and say, this is an issue that happened in twenty nineteen, or every time it get a heavy rain, you can add comments, you can attach a photo. And then ultimately we can use that information to, one, help calibrate our model, um, through the modeling that's being done with our storm sewer infrastructure. Um, that's all being inputted into a model and then that model will ultimately produce, depending on the different type of modeled rain events, um, higher intensity, shorter duration, um, sh- lower intensity, long duration events, saturated conditions, those types of things. Uh, it, they'll produce different outputs. So the model will tell us, this is an area where you should focus on implementing regional ponding or smaller scale type of treatment to retain water, hold water back. Um, essentially laying out if we already don't, if we don't already know that there's an issue in a certain neighborhood, um, it can actually project out too, to say, at a ten inch rainfall, this is where you're gonna probably see the most problems. So it not just addresses the rain events that we've seen in the past, but it also incorporates projections with climate models and different things that the U of M have developed, uh, to look at into the future. Uh, what does a catastrophic rain event look like in our community? And where are the areas that will be the most impacted? So the modeling is a big component of this, but they're also right sizing that model with actual factual inputs, um, from the community, from people. Uh, not just the people in the, not just the residents or businesses in the community, city staff can also utilize this. So, um, the, the other communities that have done something similar to this in the past have really, really benefited from city staff, public work staff, um, people that know drainage, that know where those flooding impacts, the first responders to those issues. Um, they can also input that information as well. So it's basically kind of a one-stop shop for collecting all of that data, uh, that actual user data, the people that have witnessed those things. And then, like I said, we can use it to calibrate the model, kinda right size it, make sure that we're looking at the right things. If there's a high intensity area, where did, where is that? Yep, that's what the model tells us. That's where it would probably flood. Um, in areas more concerning where we don't get any input or we haven't seen flooding in the past, and all of a sudden the model says this is a really bad spot. There might be something else going on there. So it helps inform our decisions and kinda guide us through that modeling process. Um, where we've seen a couple dry years here, but it wasn't that long ago where it was really, really wet. So, um, we know it's gonna come back. It's cyclical. Um, we will see this heavy, heavy rains again, um, saturated conditions, summer rain events. Um, there's no doubt about it. So, um, this is help preparing us for the future, uh, especially with our stormwater system to make sure that it meets the needs of our community. Certainly doesn't contribute to flooding issues or issues within the public waters in our community as well. So, um, with that, I just, what I was gonna do is just kinda give you a snapshot what this looks like. It's really simple. Uh, we'll plan on posting this on our Facebook page, our website. Um, we're actually looking to host an open house sometime in either December, maybe even January. So people in the community that have questions or just kinda wanna walk through it, see how it works, understand the value and what the purpose of this is. Um, it's, it's really simple, um, as I'll show you. It's pretty simple to do. Uh, it's a simp, we have a, a QR code that's been developed, so as people can see it pop up on their website and they can take their phone out and click and boom, it'll take them to a, a map tool. Uh, also we have, we'll have links to if people wanna click on a link, um, that'll also serve and ultimately direct them to the same spot. Uh, provides a little background information. What's the purpose of this? What's, what's its intent? It's to identify locations of localized flooding, assess risk and community vulnerability due to that flooding, and then develop potential projects to reduce flooding and mitigate or reduce the effects of climate change. Um, with this, it also notes too, as I noted earlier with receiving funds from the MPCA, there is a new grant round that just recently released. Um, we're actually looking to potentially pursue another, another grant to do the same type of work on the south half of the community, so that we'll have a citywide stormwater resilience plan to address the needs of our stormwater system moving into the future. So we'll start with one that I know of. Uh, this is, uh, area of town that we've seen flooding on before. This is field flooding. Um, it's something where we've actually worked with the landowner to implement some different improvements within the area. Um, it's as simple as clicking on a point, clicking on an area or a comment line. If you wanna draw a line, a shape, dot, whatever it may be, um, any one of them will work. So I'm gonna collect a comment area where you can actually click and highlight the area that floods. You double-click on it, you can give it a comment. Floods in the spring. Frequently. Frequently. And then you can choose a file to attach. Um, I have one saved in here too, but literally you can click on your device, attach a photo, and then it saves that point. Now that information that's entered, um, because we're sensitive to, we don't want neighbors pitted against neighbors, that information then, once you enter it, you can enter another one and enter another one in different parts of town if you want. Um, but then that, all of that information is not seen by others entering that data. So hopefully, ideally is that you have multiple people living in, around an intersection that periodically floods. If they all say the same thing about the same intersection, obviously it's an issue. It's not just an isolated one-time event where a catch basin was plugged or something. Um, we could use that information then to understand, okay, how severe is it? If a lot of people are concerned about the same area, obviously, um, where it's probably gonna be on our radar already. Um, but if it's not, certainly that'll help us inform us too for future response during flooding events. So, um, it's a really useful guide, useful tool for us in the modeling through this effort, but then also too, um, we keep a pretty standard list of properties to check when we have certain types of rains. Um, higher intensity ones are, act differently than when we have saturated soils and we have a nice long soaker for a day and a half. Those types of rates just act differently within certain areas of town. So, um, rate sizing that is an important piece of this, um, but also too, it helps guide our future decision-making on operations and maintenance, but also too on capital planning for our stormwater system. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, just wanted to kinda give you a snapshot what this looks like, um, under, help you understand what the value of it is and how it'll be used within the study.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
So I have a retention pond in my backyard and there's rocks along the edge and flowers and that kinda thing. And, you know, it rains, we get a heavy rainfall, some of that gets covered up. Now I understand that that's part of the retention pond. What is the edge of the retention pond? So somebody would say, oh, it's flooding onto my yard. What parts the yard, what parts the retention pond?
That's a great question. It depends on the pond. Um, sometimes yards are part of the pond. Um, when the pond fills up, depending on how the pond was constructed and the grades associated on the side slopes of that, we've seen ponds that'll certainly flood into half of a person's backyard where it's just unusable, because that's the way the pond was sized and designed. Typically, when you see a pond, it'll have side slopes and then it'll level off near the top. We call that the top of the bank. Typically, that's the extent of where a pond will fill up to, wherever the, relative to the overall flow structure is. So the outlet point of that pond, but in some instances, certainly larger drainage areas, certainly that pond can bounce a lot higher, um, depending on the design of the pond.
Thank you.
So John, in a case like that, would they contact you to go, is this kind of a normal area or is there a way for us to determine whether that's the design or that's something else is going on?
Yep, certainly. Um, we get, we've gotten calls like that in the past, um, and sometimes it is caused by a plugged outlet or something like that, where we've seen that it got a lot higher than it typically does. And sometimes that is indicative of a maintenance issue that needs to be addressed. Certainly, by all means, feel free to give us a call. If it's something that happens more and more frequently, um, it never fails. Uh, I don't get sump pump calls or concerns from people with sump pumps until sump pumps are running all the time. Um, it goes without being said, but it, it's amazing to me that, yes, certainly it'll drive a lot more comments during those periods. But with that, also we sharpen our pencil every time we get into a wet part of the year, um, so that we really focus and kinda get hypersensitive to those things, um, that we can address them timely. We have the right crews and the right focus at certain periods of time to really get after those types of issues when they do come up. Any others?
So this kinda helps you out too for when somebody comes in and, yeah, telling that they need a pond when they're putting a lot of hard surface down. It's kinda nice to go back to having this information on hand, I suppose, huh?
Yep, certainly. Um, and th- this plan will look at all those things. It doesn't just look at where the issues are. It also incorporates the existing infrastructure that we have. Every catch basin, manhole, pond that we have is part of this model. So we look at the drainage areas that drained to Northwoods Park Pond, for example. Before that pond was built, it was prone with flooding all over that neighborhood. The pond was built, most of those problems have gone away. The model then incorporates that pond in the drainage area that it serves. And yeah, maybe we haven't seen an issue with flooding in that neighborhood yet, but that doesn't mean that, you know, a large, really large rain event might not pose problems, signum, some significance in an area that that pond, that pond just can't keep up. It just can't provide the right amount of storage necessary to eliminate those issues or those risks. So, yes, um, the existing infrastructure is incorporated into this and that is ultimately what the purpose of this is, is to see what we have, what's working. To what point does it not provide protection? So that we can start looking and planning for, where do we build the next regional pond? Where does the next pond need to go? What do we need to do with our stormwater infrastructure? Do we need to upsize pipes during our next road construction project? All of those things, this is intended to help inform that decision-making.
Anything else for John? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready, moving on. We have no unfinished business under new business. Proposal for real estate broker service.
Um, Mayor and Council, as, as you recall, um, this is in regards to our old police facilities. Um, a couple months ago, we went out for an RFP to the public. Um, we received one response and following that response, the council made a decision that, you know, what we want to kinda pursue this a little bit further and staff was directed to put an RFP together for, um, broker services, um, to have somebody sell the, the buildings on, on the city's behalf. Um, so that went out, we did receive two responses to that RFP. Um, both of them are local. One is from, uh, Edina Realty, the other is from Hometown Realty. You've got copies of the proposals that were received, and both proposals met all the criteria that the city had laid out within the RFPs. Um, and so really it's in front of the council tonight to, to consider both of those and really consider what our next steps are. You kinda have two options. One would be if you wanna bring them in for an interview, um, you could do that, or simply just direct staff, um, to proceed with, uh, with one of the proposals and putting together a contract for those, for those services.
I'd make a motion to accept Matt Polkereb's, um, proposal.
All second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to accept Matt Polkereb from Hometown Realty proposal. Any other discussion?
I, I, I'm not gonna speak for Chad, but I, I look at the bottom line, they're very equal and very, both are great community real estate agents. I have to look at the bottom.
I have beef with either one of them.
No, it, I look at the numbers and go, that's what drives my decision here is.
Hundred percent where I was at as well.
Thank you.
I know both of them well and they're both, they both would be an excellent job, so.
I agree. Any other discussion? Call a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion carries. Uh, first reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash eight four four, ordinance amending chapter seventy-two parking regulations.
Um, Mayor and Council, this came at the request of Council member Early, so I don't know if he would like to add anything um, outside of, uh, he raised some concerns with me about our current ordinance, which has been in place for years, as long as Mark has been here, which means really long time then, right? Um, it simply notes that, uh, it's unlawful for any person to stop, park, or leave standing any vehicle upon any street for a continuous period in excess of twenty-four hours, um, and with the recommendation of changing the twenty-four hours to seventy-two hours. Um, so what's in front of you tonight is a, a first reading of that, um, and I guess I just open it back up to the council.
Well, the clarification, we have some contacts and, uh, you know, we, we discussed it and the citizen who called about this was, had been warned, I guess, of parking on the street, uh, and a handicap sign, and he has to move the vehicle out to move the other vehicle in. And he said, you know, twenty-four hours in the summer, we have people who leave on the weekend, park out on the street, disappear all weekend, and then they come back. How come they're not being picked, you know, that kinda thing? And it came down to, well, neighbors calling and saying, hey, they knew the ordinance. I don't like that pickup being parked out in front of, you know, on the street. Uh, so I told him, you know, the compromise with that would be to go to a seventy-two hour. So we're not running out every day moving a vehicle four inches and saying it moved. And it's, the intent was originally, uh, to find abandoned vehicles or to not have abandoned vehicles. I think seventy-two hours is a grace time of, you know, you have your relatives come visit you, you go camping or somewhere on the weekend. You come back Monday and you've got a ticket. Uh, it just extends it. This does not include winter parking or any other winter ordinances, uh, so that's why we proposed to extend it.
Entertainer motion?
I'm going to accept the proposed amendment.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay, motion carries. Uh, setting budget workshop for November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three at four PM, the enterprise funds.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, that's kind of the, the next, really our last workshop prior to our truth and taxation hearing. Uh, the majority of that will be on the enterprise funds, but we'll also give an update to the general fund at that, at that workshop as well.
Make a motion to set that meeting, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. The budget meeting for November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three at four PM, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Say nay, motion carries. Twelve point five, we have uh, the lease agreement for. Dynamics, Matt?
Uh, yeah, Mayor and Council, we have, um, with our enterprise center, we actually have somebody that's, uh. Thinking the process of purchasing one of the businesses that's out there. And so then we're looking to kind of basically assign a new lease to that new company that's, uh, that's purchasing that. And this is the agreement that's in front of you that would, um, do that, you know, Mark has reviewed it, everything's good within the. Um, within the agreement and staff is asking the council to consider approval of that agreement.
I know, well, Matt, you were there and Chad and I, uh, the proposal made by GBL, they just seem. They really have their act together, I mean, everything's buttoned up very tight, they're doing a great job in which field. They're looking to expand and just, I think it's a nice fit.
Immediately fills a place that's going to be vacated, so it's nice for the enterprise center.
I would agree, so. I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to accept that agreement, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say nay, motion carries. Um, we have, uh, notice reports from committees, boards or commissions. We have the sustainability advisory board minutes of Au- August twenty first, two thousand twenty three. The library board minutes of September twenty five, two thousand twenty three. Chief Jefferson, you have anything for us tonight? Mr. Stifter, do you have anything for us tonight?
One thing more about the leaves. Does end, uh, this coming Monday, it is our week six already, so, uh.
Well, I can't, I can't believe Angie didn't say anything, because ours got missed again.
We'll make sure it gets, uh, picked up here before the end, so, yeah, Monday will be today.
You know, Mike, it's funny, every year he keep, he, we, we keep convincing him that it gets missed, he hasn't figured it out yet, so.
You know, of course Angie goes, does that mean we get a break in our taxes? We understand the reasoning.
Uh, just a reminder, we've had a very good season, um, weather right around Halloween, uh, uh, pushed us back, I think, um, a couple of the routes. Caught back up though, and, um, yeah, Monday will be the last though.
You know how many, how much they collected?
You know, I, I am not sure, John will usually do a report though and he will have a pretty good idea and we've had just some really. You know, good days, um, the last couple of weeks have been by far the busiest, so, but yeah, just a reminder of, we'll do some very spot work. Um, use your compost bin, go out to Creekside, Andy has, uh, certainly got the facility open out there too. Pick up any last remnants until snow falls.
But essentially after this week, don't put them out by the curb.
Correct, as of, uh, yeah, really today, I mean, the, you know, first couple of days already are, are done for those routes. Our neighborhood was one of those, but Monday will be the last of it though, from any of the Friday garbage pickups, so. That's it.
Thanks, Mike. Say, uh, one more, how about the alleys and stuff, they, I've seen they got one layer down.
First lift down and actually, uh, maybe tomorrow, they were out last week, had their paper break down, um, but they're hoping by the end of this week to finish paving. And then we have a little bit of dirt work and some dormant seating they'll be doing, um, they hope to be done though by Thanksgiving, so.
Both the fire department.
Fire department and Taco John's, yeah, both alleys, um, we're hoping, so.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sabora, you got anything for us tonight?
The only thing is, everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
Uh, Tim, start with you.
We'll start with a belated happy Veterans Day to the veterans in this community. Uh, I stopped by last week at UCAP, which has the new offices, United Community Action. Uh, down at the Edina Realty Building, they moved to there. And just impressed with the common cup and the programs in this community that support the homeless or those people who need. Food or clothing or shelter or those kind of things, they do an awesome job in this community, so thanks to them.
Mary? Dave? He said it all.
I'll echo Tim with thanking the veterans, um, and, uh. Thank God for the leaf pickup and happy Thanksgiving to everybody coming up.
Chad?
Happy Thanksgiving and, uh, travel safe.
Matt?
Obviously with everyone's happy Thanksgiving, it's just a reminder, city offices are closed next Thursday and Friday, um, for the holiday. And then just a, a quick plug for either a council member or two. Um, but the League of Minnesota Cities is going to be doing some regional visits and they're coming out on December thirteenth, they're going to be hosting. Um, uh, a, a visit here at City Center, that'll be at two thirty on December thirteenth. And they're inviting like three or four communities, a couple of the mayors just to come in and talk about local issues, I think they're going to be a focus on. The insurance trust and the dividend and stuff, so. Otherwise, that's it for me, so.
Well, happy Thanksgiving and, uh, that was safe. I think the farmers are pretty well wrapped up, but make sure, make sure you watch where those on the road. I know that, uh, the equipment nowadays are, is huge, so. But, uh, yep.
There was a tractor going down, uh, Main Street this morning. And it didn't leave a lot of room, so.
They're, uh, they're pretty big.
Yep.
Hard to argue with.
I just waited for him.
Were you on your bicycle? All righty.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn, all in favor say aye. Opposed say nay, we're adjourned.